Do you have any questions?
Oh, you have one? Okay, I'm sorry. Today I have seven o'clock, someone called the speeding order. Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. This is the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we will move on to roll call when you're ready.
Tina Thompson, here. Chris Coolidge.
Here.
Jeremy Smell.
Here.
Charles Stahl.
Here.
Kevin Miller.
Here.
Sharon Long.
Here.
Tim Miller.
I'm here.
Ted Long.
Here.
SARPD.
Here.
Hey, do I have any agenda amendments for tonight?
I do not have anything.
If not, we'll move on to visitor different requests. I have two for you, for us here. First, I have Gary Hall, 116 Sova Road about codes and zoning issues. Mr. Hall, you have the floor.
Thank you. I came to make for two or three different reasons. One, one reason is I'd like to thank Sharon for her seventeen year service in the fire department. Her efforts in the special were very much needed in this industry. I've been a developer for forty-seven years, and what's going on in this township is a lot to do with that right now. Shamefully, she was put in a position to choose either her moral compass or to turn her head. And God bless her for taking her moral compass and not turning her head in ignorance. Fortunately, that brought to the forefront the concerns of one particular supervisor, and that's Jeremy. As far as his personal agendas and his present business practices. And there are major conflicts with his ability to perform his responsibility as supervisor. His business practices have created numerous zoning and code violations. He's ignored the need to get zoning permits and building permits and is conducting business as an Airbnb in a wedding venue in zoning districts without conditional use of approval. He eloquently complained at the budget meeting last week on TV about not being able to do whatever hell he wants to do on his own property. That was on tape.
That's true.
Okay. Most of these violations could be addressed and fixed. But you have chose not to do that. They're not that major. They could have been put to bed, done and over with. Okay, the newest violation is you know the campground. Went down to the campground and you built a house. One bedroom, one bath house.
You were inside?
I was not. It was advertised.
It was never advertised?
Well, I differ.
That's it. So the, so the advertisement on that, Gary, is simple. That is the only way you could put any kind of advertisement on Facebook related to real estate was selling lots and leased lots. So that particular building is, falls under the UCC of a, of a recreational cabin affidavit, which I have completed. It's under a thousand square feet, which doesn't require a building permit, and it sat in the place of an existing structure.
Why does it not require a building permit?
If you look at our code, under a thousand square feet.
It's not an accessory. It's not an accessory building, Jeremy. It's a residence. It's not an accessory. If it's an accessory building, it doesn't require a permit. When you have running water and you have electric.
There's no running water there.
People are gonna be staying there.
Nobody's staying there. There's no running water there. There's no dedicated use for that building.
And nobody's ever staying in that thing.
That building could be for sale. To anybody that wants to use it and then go ahead and go from there. No different than the building that was dropped down here.
And that's the same thing.
At Cool's Garage, right?
That's fine. I'm not, I'm not gonna debate it with you. It is what it is.
It's fine.
Okay. There's no reason to do that. So it, but very honestly, it should have gone through the UCC compliance. If you have the certificate for that, for that building, that's fine. Okay, that takes care of the UCC. But you still need to get the permits and the zoning permits, which, just like every other person in this room, when you're doing this now, you're not exempt.
No, I'm just targeted.
You're not above it. You're not targeted. You're not targeted, Jeremy. You do a lot of work. And, and as a supervisor, you get your zoning permit free.
I'm aware of that.
And you still work for the building. And I have an issue with that, but that's for another meeting. Okay, for first of all, use, I would agree with that. When you're using for business practices, I disagree with that. But that's neither here nor there. Okay, and furthermore, at the budget meeting last week, you presented a plan for commercial logging. And you asked the supervisors to vote and approve on that plan last week. That was not approved by the planning commission. It was tabled. And it was tabled because they had an inadequate application, an application that wasn't completely filled out, which you really didn't worry about and chose not to finish doing that. Turned it in anyhow. Didn't show up for the meeting that you could have answered any questions.
Correct, because it didn't actually.
And if they would have gone ahead and approved that, that was a clean slate with no description of work, no anything on it, where it allows you cart launch to do anything down there. Okay. You can't, this, those days are over. You can't do that crap. You just can't do that crap. Okay, I've, I've been in this a long time. Something like me that follows the codes, that gets my permits. Okay, and does it by the book. Okay, this is frustrating. Very, very frustrating. Okay. I've known you and your family for years. Okay, it's not personal, but you're not above this.
I don't think that I'm above it.
Well, you act like you're above it. You act like you're above it. And lastly, I've got the zoning. There's been mumblings as of months ago when Sharon turned in her resignation about just going away with the damn zoning. Okay, well, zoning was brought in a year ago.
Updated zoning.
Okay, updated, brought, brought in a year ago. Spent forty-five thousand plus to do that. And a year later, we want to talk about going away with it? I'm going to hear if the zoning changes tonight are on here before, and who, and who they are gonna benefit.
It was just, well, we can talk about that when we get there.
And, and I'll just listen. I'm, I'm good with that. Okay, but the way things are done, okay, any supervisor with a personal, personal agenda and lack of respect for the processes and everything that goes along with this township municipality shouldn't be supervising. Okay?
Fair enough.
If that's, if that's your continued business practice, you, you may, you may need to focus on, on applications instead of being a supervisor.
I wish you, I wish everybody would dig into everybody else's business as much as people choose to dig into mine, because I could go around this room and point out several people who have also not followed rules, not got permits when they needed, not had inspections when they needed, but I'm, that's not who I am. I, I don't want to live in a township where we throw people under the bus and chase people around for just doing, you know, living life. So.
It's not just living life. There's codes for a reason. There are, there's zoning for a reason.
And there's multiple people sitting at this table that drive by, late in fractions daily, know of things that happen, take no action, but yet choose to take action against people that they may have personal agendas with.
And I don't have a personal.
And I know, I'm not saying you do, Gary. I love you. I think you're a great guy. I had zero problems with you, and I'll still wave to you tomorrow when I drive by you. Nothing will change that relationship that I have with you. I respect your opinion. What's that?
Just don't run me off.
And I respect your opinion. I value it. So, you know, you're not upsetting me with your words. I, 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 you're entitled to your opinion.
It's not a personal tap.
I never talked about that.
The things have to change. You've gotta follow the rules.
I, I, look, I, I have no problem getting zoning permits when needed. Okay, it's, uh, you're in the middle of four hundred acres, uh, building a, building a, a building where an existing building already had sat. Uh, you know, would lead somebody to believe that it falls within the guidelines, especially considering it's a recreationally zoned campground.
If it's in, if it's, if it's replacing an entire structure, it doesn't fall in the guidelines. It's a new structure.
Fair enough.
Because it's, you have to deal with flitters. You have to deal with, you know, safety issues, the whole spiel.
Well, there's no flutters. It's on skids, but.
That's okay. There are skill issues with it, but like I say, it's been a long time.
Ten-four.
Okay, so, but I mean, it's, something's gotta be given. Something very simply has to be given.
Thank you.
Everybody needs to do it right.
I was gonna say, in the essence of time, I would like to move on to our next visitor's written request here. I have Dwayne Nepshiel of 1110 Smale Road, Leechburg, for donations to the fire department.
Good evening. Chairman of the board, board members. Uh, I'm going to go just a hair over the three minutes, not as much as Mr. Hall, but just a hair. At the November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting of the Gilpin Township Board of Supervisors Budget Workshop General Purpose Meeting, some questions were brought up concerning donations or not liking to give away taxpayers' money. I would like to take a few moments and address those concerns. The ones that are pertaining to the Gilpin Township Volunteer Fire Department. At forty-three minutes, thirty-six seconds of the livestream, the question was raised, why? This is in reference to the auto insurance being covered. We then moved to the paying for, of, of, the paying of fuel. After some discussion, at forty-five twenty, it was determined that the township is roughly shelling out or donating twelve thousand dollars to the Gilpin Township Volunteer Fire Department. So yes, currently the fire department is financially secure. That was one question that was brought up. Yes, we do generate our own funds through bingo, online raffles, drawings, gun bashes, in our mail-out letter, AKA the coin letter, asking the residents for donations. The residents of our township have never let us down. I'm glad they have our backs. And Chris, I'm sorry, boot drive just ain't gonna work, buddy. It ain't gonna fit.
Oh, oh, oh.
I, I, I assume that was a joke. Pan dog goes nuts when we shut down sixty-six for a car accident. They're not gonna let us shut it down to run out the fix. So in response, the three thousand dollar donation, the seven thousand dollar insurance, um, I think that was seventy-five hundred, but not. I, I may have the wrong number in there. Um, and seventeen hundred dollars worth of fuel usage. This enables us to have the ability to invest and grow our funds, hopefully quicker. As some of you know, a set of tires for a truck is nearly six thousand dollars. And if we were to replace one of our apparatus today, it would be nearly seven hundred thousand dollars. That would be equipped. And in comparison, other local fire departments receive donations from their councils and municipalities. They range from thirty-five thousand dollars right off the top to the low end of one thousand dollars plus fuel and utilities. Some get ten thousand dollars plus their insurance. Others is five thousand dollars in fuel. There's many different combinations depending on the situation. I purposely left out the municipalities that use a fire tax because it's not a fair comparison. The numbers that I have are I feel comparable to the communities that we have, the size community. So we can see where we stand amongst these other communities. So at the end of the day, yeah, you guys, you've been taxed with the job of deciding to hand out the taxpayers' money to these organizations that they can choose to donate to if they want. The decision is yours. And I ask that you just maybe look at it this way. You're investing in the safety of your residents. Helping us, the Gilpin Township Volunteer Fire Department, remain ready and prepared to respond when the need arises. In closing, ask yourself this question. Has any of the residents ever complained or questioned this donation to the Gilpin Township Volunteer Fire Department? Thank you for your time.
Having no other visitor's written requests, we'll move on to the minutes from the last meeting. We have the minutes from October fifteenth, October thirtieth, and November thirteenth meetings. So once everyone's had a chance to review those minutes, I will need a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Jeremy. Do I have a second? Seconded by Kevin. Any questions or comments on the minutes?
Wait, I think I have a question.
Yes.
Um. Oh, never mind, sorry.
Okay.
The motion is to approve all three here.
Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we'll move on to the financial report when you're ready, Sharon.
In the capital reserve fund, starting balance is one hundred twenty-four thousand, two hundred forty-seven dollars and sixty-one cents. Total receipts of three hundred eighty-five dollars and seventeen cents, leaving an ending balance of one hundred twenty-four thousand, six hundred thirty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents. In the general fund, starting balance is two hundred sixty-nine thousand, three hundred ninety-one dollars and twenty-six cents. Total receipts of twenty-two thousand, eleven dollars and thirty-nine cents. Total disbursements of eighty-three thousand, seven hundred eighty-seven dollars and sixty-two cents, leaving an ending balance of two hundred and seven thousand, six hundred fifteen dollars and three cents. In the payroll fund, starting balance is zero, total receipts of eleven thousand, five hundred ninety-seven dollars and seventy-three cents. Total disbursements of eleven thousand, five hundred ninety-seven dollars and seventy-three cents, leaving an ending balance of zero. In the non-uniform pension fund, starting balance is zero, total receipts of two thousand, four hundred fifty dollars and twenty cents. Total disbursements of two thousand, four hundred fifty dollars and twenty cents, leaving an ending balance of zero. In the road bond fund, the starting and ending balance is the same of nine thousand, three dollars and twenty-six cents. In the state fund, the starting balance is ninety-two thousand, eight hundred thirteen dollars and ninety-three cents. Total receipts of two hundred eighty-four dollars and one cent. Total disbursements of two thousand, six hundred sixty dollars and ninety-three cents, leaving an ending balance of ninety thousand, four hundred thirty-seven dollars and one cent, and that is all.
Having heard the financial report, do I have a motion to approve?
Make that motion.
Motion by Chris.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Tina. Any questions or comments on the financial report? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we'll move on to the bills list. Once everyone has had a chance to review the bills list, I need a motion to pay the bills.
I'll motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Motion by Chris, seconded by Jeremy. Any questions or comments on the bills? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we'll move on to executive session. Do we have a need for executive session? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the solicitor's report whenever you're ready, Tim.
Yeah, quick report. I reached out to Scott Avolio from Mont, their solicitor, late last week about, uh, status of GTMA, um, kind of a very preliminary discussion, so obviously I told him time is of the essence. I think they meet next week. I'll, I'll follow up with them on that, but, um, keep the board posted on that. I started working on the articles and incorporation for, I'm sure that's a, a point of interest in the back there on the park. I, I never got the, the old ones, so I'm not wasting time helping and praying for them anymore, so just started the process of getting that. I need some info from Leechburg. Uh, I'm their ZHB solicitor, and they had someone apply for one recently, so I gotta go down there later this week, so I'll pick up what I need there, but other than that, um, that's about it for me this month. Any questions?
I don't think so. A motion to approve this solicitor's report?
One more thing, we should have the, uh, uh, order from the Supreme Court probably by next month on the, uh, agenda amendment, so I can finally advise you with some clarity on that, so.
Good to know.
Yep. Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
That's okay. That being said, do I have a motion to approve the solicitor's report? Motion by Kevin and seconded by Tina?
Sounds good. Thanks.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we'll move on to old business. We have discussion on codifications. Uh, I don't know if anyone ever reviewed the packet, but it's something I would like to include in our preliminary budget, so I'm gonna talk about that a little bit when we get down to the preliminary budget advertisement, so.
Can you just, can you explain to us what it is?
Yeah, so codification is the process of taking all the, or the township ordinances that we have approved since the nineteen forties that we have on record, and even before that, if we can find others before that. Compiling them into one code book that then allows them to be easier reviewed. It makes them available online. It makes one set of township codes rather than having to, when an ordinance issue arises, search through a hundred years of ordinances, not quite a hundred years, I guess eighty years of ordinances that we have on record. So it, it's, it's just a way to simplify the codes process, and Tim, if you have more to add to that.
Yeah, I mean, generally, in my experience, it's done by topic too, so you'd have like chapter, whatever, three would be zoning, chapter four would be this, this, and this, and it's just, ah, you know, I get it, it comes at a cost, but it certainly makes the whole research and access of the, of the ordinances easier, but obviously it's your decision ultimately. I know Oklahoma is undertaking a similar process because their ordinances are very scattered as well. I mean, quite frankly, if you Googled any municipality and kind of checked out the way that their, um, ordinances are organized online, you get a pretty good idea of what, what that process involves there, so.
What's the possible cost?
So, per the packet I put on the meeting a couple, or on the meeting table a couple months ago, thirteen thousand, nine hundred ninety-five, one-time investment. Um, there are some recurring, if we want to have it available online, there's a yearly fee for it to be online. And then you would pay, as you pass new ordinances, whenever those do arise, you pay a fee for them to update the code.
So we're just, so we're gonna pay somebody to organize or stuff?
It would pretty much, yeah, I'd be paying someone to put it into an official code book.
So is it something like a committee of us could do that maybe understands our township a little bit better and could, you know, get rid of stuff that's old and outdated?
Well, it, it's not the point. I wouldn't say that it's something a committee could do, and Tim, maybe I'm wrong, but.
I've never really undertaken one.
It goes through full legal review. They have teams of attorneys that go through. They'll compare new ordinances to old ordinances, toss out old ordinances. They will give you recommendations on stuff that's no longer legal by state law, no longer legal by federal law. They'll make all of those changes as they go through the codes. So it, it's a process of pretty much bringing all your codes to date and making them compliant with any other laws that may be struck in the most years. I mean, they have, in my experience, full legal teams that handle this. Usually you're working with three to four attorneys doing this process. So I mean, could, could a committee undertake it? I'm not saying it's impossible, but I think we're getting into some big things and some big mistakes could be made if a committee wanted to do it.
And where are we, where are we stumbling now with the current setup?
I would just say looking for codes. What's our most recent codes in the process, especially now that we have a code enforcement officer to enforce township codes? I mean, we have six burning ordinances in the book. You know, we have, I don't even know, we have a couple different property maintenance codes, a couple different UCC codes, a couple different of all sorts of ordinances, and some ordinances strike portions of other ordinances. So it, it makes it a lot harder. It's a bigger process to track through codes. It's just a proposal, something that I thought could be beneficial to our taxpayers to be able to get in and see the codes better and understand township. So I'll bring that up again when we get down to the budget. So municipal authority, I believe, Tim, you kind of, Tim kind of covered this under his report.
It's kind of where we are with it, so not a whole lot to report, but I'm, I know, like I said, time is of the essence, so.
Just to update the residents, basically what's happening is the Gilpin Township Water Authority is folding. And then what happens then is that responsibility falls to us, the supervisors, whether we decide to take it on and try to maintain it, hire workers, run it, uh, fund it, et cetera. Or the other option is to entertain officers, offers to, to have it purchased by, you know, another water authority. And that just kind of fell into our lap within the last
Three months?
Two to three months, which isn't a whole lot of time, because it's a long process to take it over. So just, that's where things are right now. We're trying to figure out how to continue to supply everybody with good water.
And sewer, this would be sewer, or be full water and sewer. So do I have a motion to leave municipal authority discussions on the table?
We make a motion to leave it on the table?
Motion seconded. Any questions or comments on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So now we're down to preliminary budget.
This kind of goes along with municipal authority as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's a letter in our packet.
Okay, I know. I did not see that there. We'll come right over here. So while we're talking about municipal authority, we have a letter here from Jack McIntyre, who currently sits on the municipal authority. His term is up at the end of this year. He wrote, supervisors, my term on the Gilpin Township Municipal Authority comes to an end on December thirty-first. After much thought, I would like to extend my appointment until the finalization in the future or dissolvement of the authority has been determined. Your consideration, my continuation of serving on the authority is appreciated respectfully, Jack McIntyre. So that being said, do I have a motion to reappoint Jack McIntyre to the Gilpin Township Municipal Authority?
I'll make a motion to reappoint Jack McIntyre.
Do we know a term duration?
It would be a five-year term, but, yeah.
Or a five-year term?
Unless it's all right.
No, I, I agree.
Yeah, I believe all authorities are.
Yeah, I just know if they had staggering terms.
Yeah, they do, and his would be a five. So I have a motion by Jeremy. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Tina, seconded. Any other questions or comments on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll move on to preliminary budgets. So do we have any further discussion on the preliminary budget that we worked on in the last budget workshop?
So adding in this certification thing, where would we stand?
So we would go to, it's, yes, at the last budget meeting, we were about a hundred and twenty-five thousand in black, so that would burn us down to a hundred and, we'll say a hundred and ten thousand in the black.
That's gonna be my question. I missed the last meeting, sorry. Um, but just confirming, that doesn't, it doesn't create a need to cut somewhere, make a change?
I would say no. I mean, we're, we have a budget that's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in the black. Um, and we've, other than if we were to not do a project like this, we've trimmed I think every bit of fat that we typically can.
Well, that was my concern. I don't know where, where we're cutting, if we have to start cutting to find that money.
Yeah, no, we, as, as it stands, with this being a one-time investment, um, I would not say we have to make any additional changes to the budget to do the codification.
How long would it be good for?
Codification?
Like the next hundred years?
Good forever, as long as you keep sending them the ordinances as you make them. They'll keep updating the code, and it'll be accessible in public forever.
You probably have a hundred and fifty years. I don't want to be like the cheerleader of codification here. I mean, I don't care what you guys do ultimately with it. The board's decision, but it would be your entire, uh, code book would be basically re, reconstituted, reorganized. Again, whatever the board decided, I'm fine with, so. I've made it work for eight years now, so I think I'll be all right. Hopefully not hurt.
And that bill's gonna be thirteen thousand, one ninety-five? Is that what you said?
Double check.
Nine ninety-five.
Nine ninety-five, thirteen, nine ninety-five, so. Accounting for inflation, since that's a couple months old, we'll, I'll say fifteen grand. Would be my guess. Now, that is split up over most likely a two-year period. Um, because codification isn't a simple, just a couple weeks, boom, it's done. They will take, let me see what their timeline says here.
So we're not the full fourteen or fifteen?
We most likely will not have to pay out that full fifteen in the first year.
So we would.
We would budget some of that into the next year as well, so I would say, I would say half and half, maybe, or maybe three quarters in the first year, a quarter in the second year.
Well, at least for me, that changes my thoughts.
Thoughts on that, okay. Yeah, the way they broke it down.
So with inflation, you're saying it's probably closer to fifteen because the quote's a little old. But it'll take a couple of years for it to be complete, so we would pay like seven thousand this year and the remaining balance next year, so it would be split across two budgets, not the full fourteen or fifteen out of the budget.
Yeah, so their payment schedule is twenty percent of the project debt. Twenty percent of the project contract signing, twenty percent at submission of the organizational analysis, which is within a hundred, or within eighty days of contract signing and the receipt of materials. The township has thirty days for review from there. Then they will charge us thirty percent of the total project price due within a hundred, or at submission of the editorial and legal analysis with manuscript. That's within a hundred and eighty-day receipts of the responses to the organizational analysis. From there, we have a hundred days to review. Submission of draft is another twenty percent due. That's within a hundred and forty-five days of receipt of responses to the editorial legal. And then at the delivery of the code, we pay the remaining balance. So I mean, all things considered with the timelines they give us, we have over a year to complete this project, so I would be, I would say, say probably forty percent one year, sixty in the other. Maybe even.
What's across the update?
Every time we submit updates, what's our?
Let me find their fee schedule in here.
Which I'm sure will change every year, just like Tim says.
Just like everything does.
Easy, shot fired.
Big crowd today. I'm taking a lot of hits.
Sharon, if you could, I need to know if that, no, no, sorry?
Issue one to Mr. Coolidge.
Everyone's on a weird behavior. Although that's the best.
You're in the black though, apparently, so maybe this is the time to say, hey, you know?
You're the math guy. Twenty percent at signing, twenty percent at material delivery, thirty percent at a hundred and eighty days after the first review, twenty percent at draft, twenty percent at final, that's more than a hundred percent, you're saying.
Well, no, the final was final balance, not twenty percent. It's whatever, whatever the remaining balance is, is what's due at the final.
Ten percent.
So it looks like the annual fee is three hundred dollar maintenance fee for.
I think that's it, but there's no way. I think that's it, there's no way.
I cannot find the document, but for our next meeting, I can email them and get them to give me the exact updated costs.
It would be a maintenance fee plus a.
They would do the, the yearly fee, which is what's to keep it online. I mean, if we wouldn't keep it online, we wouldn't have to pay that yearly fee.
What's yearly?
I think it said three fifty.
Yeah. Is there a reason, I'm, I'm looking at you, Tim, is there a benefit reason that we pay the additional three fifty every year to have it online?
I mean, it's certainly nice to be able to access it online, but again, I, I, you know.
We would sell a copy, right? You would have a copy.
We would have, yeah, paper copy. And in fact, when we send them the ordinances and they do charge for the update on it, they'll send you updated pages to add to your paper copy. It's usually in like a binder. And then they'll send you new pages.
Not to be cheap, but I'm just saying, three fifty's three fifty, man.
Listen, I'm not, I'm not here for, is it American Legal?
Uh, that one's actually from General Code.
Yeah.
Which is sister company. Yeah, so. So I would ask that the board do consider this proposal for the budget. Okay, here we go, sorry. I was incorrect, annual, annual overall fee was more than I thought, I was reading a different fee. The annual e-code fee to keep it online is eleven ninety-five a year, one thousand one hundred ninety-five a year. I was reading the wrong fee line.
So if we agree to do this, we, I, we can, we can separate each of these things, right? Agree to do codification, agree about online, agree, but because I don't know that I'm all in on all things.
Yeah, it would be thirteen nine ninety-five to just do this at the first round.
And we're looking at setting that roughly between two budget years. And then we would have a separate.
Eleven ninety-five a year if we were claiming to be online.
And you're still not sure what it costs to like update it?
No, I'm looking for that and I'm not seeing it in their initial proposal.
That's one million dollars, Chris.
But they do a lot of local, in Armstrong County, they do the Borough of Kataning, they do the Borough of West Kataning, they do the Township of East Franklin. I did solicit proposals from other codification companies. General Code's the only one that got back to me. American Legal wouldn't quote me because General Code's quoted me in their sister companies, so. There's really only three or four out there that do codification on a regular basis, basis. Unless you pay your attorney firm to do it, but I don't, I don't know that you guys do codification.
We're not gonna be undertaking a codification. Yeah, on that one, yes, for sure.
Well, what I'll do is I will make the motion that we include this in our preliminary budget. Um, we will, let's do, I'd, I'd feel better maybe doing sixty percent in the first year and forty in the second year. And if we spend less in the first year, we adjust accordingly, so.
Wow.
So it'll be eight thousand three hundred ninety-seven in the first year. That would be sixty percent of the total cost.
And all you're doing is putting that on the preliminary budget for us to prove next month?
Approve at our final meeting, yeah. I would, I would like to make a motion that we add this cost to our preliminary budget.
Just to prove and see if we can handle it, correct?
I mean, we would make the final decisions for the final budget on December 26th when we vote to enact. If there's anything we want to pull at that time, that's when we do it.
Because I'm inclined not to agree without knowing what the, the cost to update and all, all of the things associated.
Yeah, so I mean, that could be pulled at the final budget time. The budget can be, have minor changes made up to approval of the final budget on December 26th. But I would like to ask that we include it in our preliminary budget for advertising.
Because if we don't advertise it, we can't put it in, right?
It, I, it's probably better to cut things whenever you're doing your final budget than to add.
I would say it's literally expenditure that much.
Yeah.
Better off cutting rather than adding.
So my motion's on the floor, if anyone is willing to second.
I'm just trying to move forward and understand. If we pencil it in for preliminary budget, we can take it back out.
We can take it back out before we approve the final budget.
My understanding is I might be willing to make a motion to approve putting this in for advertisement and further review at the budget meeting.
At our year-end meeting.
Or year-end budget meeting.
Well, I made the motion, so are you seconding my motion for that?
With my change.
With my change, I think I amended your motion.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I got.
I mean, for me, it was we add to the preliminary budget for final, for approval at the final, but I'm fine with your specific wording. I will amend my motion to match your wording, so.
I don't need that wording again.
Tina, go ahead, word the way you would like it.
So make a motion to add the sixty percent codification to the advertised budget for final discussion and approval at the December twenty-sixth.
Year-end meeting.
Budget, final budget meeting. So that we can review all of the fees holistically before we sign on the document.
So we'll just make that a motion by Tina, I'll second your motion, Tina. Are there any other questions or comments on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you guys, and I'll work on getting more information and emailing out to everyone in the next couple of days here. Um, sale of Raymond Road property. As everyone knows, last month, we announced our intentions to sell the property, which appraised under the six thousand dollar threshold at one-twenty Raymond Road. We did advertise for offers, we received one offer from Mr. Ron Graham for one thousand five hundred dollars.
I'm glad that I went, I talked to P SATs about this and they liked what we did here with this, thought it was very thorough. So we, we can proceed legally on this.
Bravo.
Good, good to know.
We did more than we needed to.
We get gold stars for that, right, Sharon? Thank you.
You need the motion too, so.
I do need that motion. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that was a.
I'll make the motion to sell Ron Graham.
Motion by Jeremy, seconded by Kevin, to sell the property to Mr. Ron Graham. Any questions or comments on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes.
Aye.
Opposed?
Congratulations, thanks, man.
Motion carries.
It's been a long, it's been a long process.
Thank you, Mr. Graham.
Sorry about that, Ron.
We appreciate you putting pressure on the county too, to make sure this goes through. Okay, any other old business?
Yeah, it's like, it's more.
Yes, we can do that, so.
More is in here.
Maury, if you could step forward here, we're gonna throw in a little award presentation for you.
Just go up here. If I can have everybody's attention for a minute. October first was just a normal day for Maury and his family. They were on their way to their son, brother's soccer game at Valley High School. While attending that game, one of their players collapsed on the field, lifeless, no heartbeat from what I understand. One of our employees, Maury, jumped in, assisted with the AED and CPR. To this day, the young man is fine. He's progressing, correct? He's good?
I met him.
So on that behalf of me and the other supervisor, we wish to appreciate, give you this award for your heroism.
Why couldn't you get help?
Thank you for your family coming.
Thank you.
Congratulations again, Maury, thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to the new business. Uh, we have, so Raymond Road property, which we handled on our old business, so we will strike that. That I believe was just a mistake, accidentally putting it on both. So we will move on to code policy. Tina, this was a question by you to be added. Policies and procedures for code.
Oh, right. Um, so some of the discussion that we've had at our meetings is, do we, do we want to be out in constant search? Or do we want to be responding when complaints are brought to us? I feel like my understanding when we brought on our code enforcement officer was a set plan that we certainly want to enforce the code. We don't want to be a lawless community, or at least I don't want to be a lawless community. But I also don't want to be in constant chase of watching properties, looking out for things. If there are complaints or if we see something that is a violation that needs to be addressed. But otherwise, I think, you know, for me, my wish would be to see that. If there's a complaint, we address it. If we're on our way to a complaint and we see another violation, we have to address it. We can't just turn our heads and ignore things. But, um, you know, I, I don't feel that we should have our code enforcement officer out in direct search, nor should we be sending him looking. So I want, I think, I want to make sure that we're clear as a, a group on what, what our desire is and what our direction is for our code enforcement officer.
So John, I'm gonna defer to you, if you don't mind, on how you've been handling it thus far in your couple of months here.
Oh, well, thus far, I believe in my initial interview with you guys, we had talked about areas of the township that were neglected. So my initial focus was on those areas. And you'll see on my report, a lot of them are addresses in those areas. Anything that was brought to my attention, I pursued. You know, I don't patrol the township working for things. However, if I'm on my way to a complaint and I see three other things on my way there, I feel it's only right to I address them.
Yes.
Because the last thing I want to be able, or be accused of is targeting people. So the list is compiled of, that is of things that I observed while in route or around in checking on something else.
Following up on a complaint.
Right, right, because, you know, currently I'm using my own vehicle, so I'm not gonna put the extra wear in there and spend the gas just to ride around and look for things. Um, but my focus has always been on a complaint or something that's brought to my attention.
And I want to make sure that that's agreed of what we're doing and how we're handling it, because I think there was a little bit of uncertainty at one of our meetings of question of if we're, if we're sending, like, oh, I heard this, go check into it. I want to make sure that we are all on the same page that if a complaint comes and, and I don't, we can't turn our head, we can't just be selective of it one direction or the other. But I want to make sure that we're addressing complaints, but not intentionally set out looking.
Could I ask you a question?
Yes.
Where would be the proper place to make this complaint?
We have.
I think we have it online now and we have it here.
Yes.
That just sets it up.
So we can call the borough secretary or the township secretary and make the complaint?
You can.
Show it, lay it on to the code enforcement officer?
Yep, so you can either, well, we have paper forms and we have an online submission.
I'm sorry, Tina, but the way you just said that, oh, I heard this, go check it out. I don't want to see that. Well, that's what it's gonna be, it's gonna be one of us calling in and saying, hey, I saw something.
It's an official complaint form that you.
You can't just call in and say, I saw something, you have to fill out a form. Put your name and address on it.
This is where it's occurring at.
So that if somebody feels they're being targeted, they have your name and address?
So, so if I, if I may.
I'm sorry, Mike, whoa, I had a question there. So if somebody feels they're being targeted, you're giving them your name and address?
If that is not given to the person.
It's given to the code enforcement officer.
Our records.
Anything that comes in.
Just, just you guys sitting at this table.
I would prefer it stay with the code enforcement officer.
It's just the code enforcement officer.
That's, that's, that's my point.
Unless you choose not to fill out the complaint form and you want to call Sharon and ask Sharon to complete the form for you, then you're adding another person to, to that information. But if you fill out the complaint form online.
You know, just want to be clear here that, you know, nobody's getting targeted.
Yeah, I do not reveal it to the person.
Okay. You know, because somebody could get targeted here, you know?
But it's also.
The perception could be, you know?
But it's also for him to follow back up with you if there are additional questions to let you know what's been addressed, because that's some of the complaints that we've received is that, how do I know? I, I, I complain about this all the time and I never hear anything. So this also allows John to.
Because it seems like the most effective thing to do is complain on Facebook, get more answers.
Yeah.
Than you do at these meetings.
I mean, that's your choice, you're welcome to do that, but I think if you want to see change happen, have a discussion at the beginning where change can happen, is the place to do it.
So to bring some order back to this.
I mean, I don't have any complaints, but I mean, I.
Jazz, I'm gonna bring this back in so we can move forward here.
Okay, sorry.
Just to make clear, so the online report form is at www.gilpintwp.com向下的report. You can also go to the Gilpin Township website, there's a tab you can click on that says File Code Zoning Report. It's right there for anyone who wants the online report. That goes straight to our code enforcement officer, straight to his email that he has access to.
But, but we can't just call the secretary and tell her and she can fill it out, right?
Yeah, you can call her and she can fill out a form for you too, I believe is how we've discussed doing this. As long as there's a form with the information going to you.
But that allows one more person to have that information. So if you're worried about privacy and keeping it as confidential as possible, you'll want to submit the form directly to them.
Okay, so do we have anything else for code policy? It sounds like we're all kind of on the same page here for how we're doing this, so. If not, I'm gonna move on to zoning officer. So as everyone knows, we had the resignation of our zoning officer Sharon Long last month. Um, we had talked, John, with you when we were interviewing you about converting you to that in January. Um, and I believe it is the intention of the board to appoint you to that effective tonight, should that be acceptable to you? Um, initially it was, part of the offer was for it to become in January, we're just bumping it forward a little bit, so.
Well, my, my only concern with that is that I've only been in this role for a couple of months now. And to add that next layer of the zoning, you know, my past experience, I have little exposure to zoning. So there's a learning curve there. So that would be my hesitation is I don't know how effective I could be immediately until there was a break-in period till I can get adjusted and learn your zoning and, and how your procedures work.
And I, I want to believe there'd be a decent, we'll call it a grace period, for you to take some time to learn and understand. I think any of us are happy to answer questions that you might have as you're learning the new zoning. I, I don't think there's gonna be a lot of extra work on you. There's a couple pending permits right now that we're gonna have to pick up and run with, and I'm happy to help walk you through the zoning and help you figure out what's relevant, what's not. But I, I mean, is it something you would be willing to do?
Well, I don't have any objections at this.
Okay, okay.
Just as long as everybody's aware that there's.
There's gonna be a bit of.
There's issues and there's things that can happen.
Yeah, and I'm happy to, there, there's a lot of training out there too. The Pennsylvania, I think it's the PMPI, Pennsylvania Municipality Planning Institute, does some trainings as well for zoning officers and zoning in general that I'd be happy to look for and get you set up with.
P SATs does them all.
P SATs does them all, I think they're PMPI. So there, there are classes out there that I think, and I can't speak for the board, but I would hope the board would be willing to give you some training on that so you have a better understanding of it. So with that being said, do I have a motion to appoint John Fontaine as our zoning officer effective immediately?
I will second.
Motion by Chris, seconded by Tina, any other questions or comments on that?
Thank you, John.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, motion by Chris, seconded by Tina. I think it'll just happen, right? Yeah.
Mm-hmm, Chris, I second. And then I said, thank you, John.
So we'll move on to zoning changes. Jeremy, this was a request that you'd like to address.
So the, the reason for this was simple, it was just we've had a lot of discussion in regard to, as a group of supervisors, looking at the current zoning that we put in place recently and just seeing, are there areas that are possibly too restrictive? I, I guess I just wanted to see if anybody has, has looked over it or taken the time to look over it and saw any areas where they would like to possibly tweak or make any changes. I mean, I, I obviously I'll stand behind the fact that I'm not a fan of zoning, that doesn't mean that we shouldn't have it. You know, there's five people here that can make that decision. I think there's a lot of local townships around us that operate without zoning and operate fine. But I'm not advocating for that, I'm just advocating to look at it and see how does it best fit our township. You know, I've heard a lot of people complaining in general to me about situations with, with the new zoning. Maybe it's just being enforced more, uh, maybe we're taking a closer look at it and it's causing some of our residents issues, I, I don't know. I can only speak from my, you know, personal experience with it. You know, it hasn't been great to me, but that's okay, uh, it still, it still applies to me.
So not asking you to name names or anything, you said there were a couple of areas that people were brought to your attention, but what areas might that be? I'm just curious for, as we figure this out.
I think it's just generally speaking, when people want to do something with their land, whatever it may be, whether they want to, you know, ha- have anything on that land, like it's, it's their property to do what they want with, whether it's a lot size, whether it's, uh, you know, a building on that land, a business, we've approved multiple businesses in agricultural areas over the years. And I think people just don't like to be, you know, told what they can do with their, with their property, uh, whether it be having a home business in it, whether it be logging it. I mean, even though that's a simple process that I'm going through now, but it's become much more laborsome to do so. So everybody, all, generally speaking. So, everybody, all, all, generally speaking, this goes beyond that, we had already talked about just looking it over and seeing if there are any tweaks, and I guess I was asking if anybody has taken the time to do that, really. It wasn't necessarily this splash play where we're gonna come in and we're gonna make major changes tonight, it was just a general way to bring up the discussion and meeting in public, so. Has anybody taken the time to look at it and see if there's anything that they would like to tweak, add, change, take out?
You know, I'm, I'm a nickel map, it's off pretty, pretty long time, I mean, before that got to the new ordinance and all, you know, I mean, that, that, that was out there and was strategized with everybody, you could run it up a couple of times, I mean, I'm not wanna say much, but I feel like it was a pretty good one, I'm just, I'm putting my opinion.
I understand, I'm gonna keep the discussion to the board for now. I'm gonna keep my discussion to the board for now, but if you have any comments, we have a visitor comment again, as you know, so I'm just gonna keep it to the board for now, please. So if anyone has any answers to.
We don't have to take any further than that, we can move right on, it was just a general question.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
No, no action is needed on it by any means, it was just a discussion point, so.
Just for clarification, there is a process, if somebody wanted to bring something up for review, there is a process we would have to follow for that.
Yes, there's.
Just because there are people here that haven't been here for past meetings, can you just share the process?
So there, there's a process laid out in our zoning and the municipality's planning code, which is state law. Um, any changes to zoning require an amendment to be introduced, um, we have to prepare an ordinance for those amendments, we have to, depending on the type of amendment, notify, if it's a map amendment surrounding property owners to that map amendment. If it's just a use amendment, we have to put out a public notice as well as schedule a public hearing with a sonographer. We would hold that public hearing, um, for people to be able to come and give comment on record regarding the proposed changes. And then from there, and Tim, correct me if I'm missing anything, it goes to. It goes, it goes to the, uh, to the final step of enacting the ordinance, which then enacts those changes within a whatever timeframe. Did I miss anything?
The planning commission will also have.
Uh, yes, planning commission has to make a recommendation as well on the proposed amendments.
It's not a, you know, tonight, you're gonna, I believe there's a vote to adopt the UCC ordinance. You can vote to advertise it, December you can come back and vote on it, it's just not quite that simple with, with zoning. MPC has a lot of procedures in place, so.
But making sure, it, it's advertised in the public, has a chance to come and comment on that change against us now.
Yep, absolutely. There's full opportunity for a hearing.
Public comment is a, is absolutely necessary, that, if you don't conduct a public hearing, you essentially render your zoning ordinance or change void off that, and the court would have serious grounds to strike it right then and there.
And Tina, I know you weren't here for that full process, but that was the process we went through when we enacted the new zoning as well, cause that was considered more of a, we won't call it a new zoning as much as an overhaul of our zoning, so.
We treated it as a.
As a large amendment.
An enactment, I thought.
Well, no, you're right, we did treat it as a large.
I thought the best way to do it was to just go about the process of almost saying, we're doing brand new zoning, so although I didn't draft any of it, that was that company that did, that was the, uh, that was the procedure that was taken, an amendment's not quite as difficult, but you still have a lot of steps to follow under the MPC in order to adopt. I've sent out a hundred memos on this, so Tina, send me an email, I'll be happy to forward it, uh, forward it to you.
She's, she's got it.
I was just asking, because we're keeping it at the table and there's others in the room, so just for clarification for everyone that if this conversation continues and somebody does bring forward a change requested, that it's advertised and the public has a chance to come and comment on it, that we wouldn't just, because we're keeping the conversation at this table, doesn't mean that we just get to decide.
There's multiple, multiple public steps that have to be taken for any, any change.
So, okay, anything else on this item? Not, we will move on to advertising ordinance for UCC. Um, this is, as you recall, we made a motion because MDIA was terminating our UCC enforcement contract to move over our UCC enforcement back to the Armstrong County UCC Group, which is a council of governments in Armstrong County that administers uniform construction codes. Um, they currently work through Bureau Veritas, that's technically subject to change every year, but tends to be Bureau Veritas with the lowest fee for them. So that being said, we do have to advertise an ordinance, which is actually the second page here. That ordinance, once approved, authorizes us to enter into the agreement with the UCC Group, which is the page that was on top there. So all we need for now is a motion to advertise the UCC ordinance, Tim, I believe you said you reviewed this and everything's in.
Make a motion, we advertise the ordinance for the UCC.
Motion by Jeremy, I think I heard it, seconded by Kevin, any other questions or comments on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, this next step, I'm gonna wait until we actually enact the ordinance, I should've told you this for the agenda prep, I don't think we should appoint our representatives or appeal members until we actually enact the ordinance. So I'm gonna make a motion, we table appoint a municipal representative and appeals hearing for UCC, seconded by Tina, any questions or comments on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, next we have contract agreement acknowledgement for the Armstrong Conservation District. Ted, you wanna talk a little about this grant?
Oh, it's just the, from the Armstrong Conservation District, along with that class and what we certified, and I feel that we're all for, uh, coal and load. So we were awarded that grant.
Awesome, great stuff. I like your answer.
I like Rhodes Beach, thanks, thank you, Ted.
So.
Another gold star, Ted, you got two gold stars tonight.
So that being said, do I have a motion to acknowledge this agreement with the Armstrong Conservation District and authorize Ted and Sharon to sign as necessary on behalf of the township?
I will, but I will make that motion.
Motion by Tina.
There was a lot of words in that, Charlie, I'm, I'll make a.
Yeah, sorry, we're authorizing them to sign because there's gonna be grant agreement stuff coming through that they can just do during the day.
Yes.
Seconded by Chris, any other questions or comments on that?
Thank you, Ted.
Yeah, thank you, Ted, for doing that, I know it was a, a lot of quick turnaround for that, I appreciate it, this is great for the township.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, yeah, just Ted, what did you do?
Opposed, motion carries. Next we want to, resolutions for LSA, so I have in front of you two resolutions for two separate LSA grants. Um, one of which, one is for us to hopefully purchase a new tractor. Um, this is, the LSA is due at the end of this month, we require resolutions that authorize us to apply for these grants, so I have prepared the grant application and the resolutions. Um, something I wanna note on the tractor one, I did include that we would contribute twenty thousand dollars in matching funds next year out of our current equipment budget. Uh, the reason I recommend that is LSA is a highly, 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 highly competitive grant. Um, at the, it's a statewide grant, so it's really competitive and you can make your application stand out if you pledge money where there's actually no money required to be pledged. So I did in our resolution include contributing twenty thousand dollars of our funds, which I think we should have in reserve from previous equipment sales, et cetera. Um, towards that grant application. So, and then the other, uh, LSA resolution here is for, if you all recall, a couple of months ago, you authorized me to go and work with the Regional Comprehensive Plan Group uh, for our extremely, extremely outdated regional comprehensive plan for Gilpin Township, Parks Township, Bethel Township and Leechburg Borough. Um, Parks Township was going to be taking the lead on this application, but for some reason their supervisors decided to vote against enacting this resolution. So I did step up and volunteer for Gilpin Township to take the lead on the grant funds. Um, this is just a portion of the grants, this would be a request for fifty thousand and then we would be submitting a secondary request to the Municipal Assistance Program for additional funding to hopefully avoid any out of pocket, cause the Municipal Assistance Program does require a match. And if we can get this LSA grant, that will cover that match, so we don't have to pay anything out of pocket. Um, it will look good too for the map grant, if we also have applied for other grants to cover that funding. So I am asking for approval of both of these resolutions in hopes of getting some LSA grant money next year.
So many questions.
That's okay.
Question one, we get it, but we don't get the match, so there's out of pocket. Do we have to move forward?
So question number one is referring to the tractor one.
Nope.
No, planning one, comprehensive one. So we aren't.
So many questions on planning, tractor seems pretty straightforward, agreed, twenty thousand, I'll bet, I'll bet with that one.
Questions on the planning.
Question on planning, if we apply and we don't get the match, so there is out of pocket, can we decide not to go forward or once, if we get the grant, we have, we have to do it?
We can always decide not to go forward with it, but that would be the secondary grant that hasn't even been applied for yet, I would be bringing documents on that in the coming months from the board to approve. We are just taking the lead on this grant, so should there be any costs, they are going to be equally shared between all the municipalities.
That was my second question. So even though that.
You just, these grants require there to be a applying municipality, we can't all jointly apply to it. So one municipality has to take the lead in seeking the grant funds, and then those grant funds and any expenses are split between all municipalities.
And even if Parks declined to take the lead on it, that doesn't mean that they're not participating.
That doesn't mean they're, correct, correct, they just declined to take the lead and doing grants, so, that's okay, that's not a lot.
Guess there's three questions, not so many questions.
So I, I did volunteer to step up and help submit this grant. I am working, you'll see, item number two on that resolution authorizes the Southwestern Pennsylvania Municipal Project Top to Prepare and Submit the Grant on Our Behalf. I am working with that organization, they are a completely free organization that helps prepare grants for small municipalities in Southwestern Pennsylvania. Um, we had reached out to them as a group there to see if they could help us secure funds. Uh, they have all the people and things in place to secure these funds. So I did add that authorization in there, should they submit the application on our behalf. Something nice that they're doing is there's a hundred dollar application fee, they have offered to cover that hundred dollars for us, that Southwestern Pennsylvania Project Top. So they will prepare and submit for us, we will work with them on getting that funding. And if we're lucky enough, we get all the funding, we can redo our twenty plus year old regional comprehensive plan with the other municipalities, so I am asking for approval on these resolutions. I believe this would be resolution number four and five. So we will assign the tractor grant as number four of twenty twenty-four and the South Central Armstrong Regional Comprehensive Plan as resolution five of twenty twenty-four. That being said, do I have a motion to approve resolution number four of twenty twenty-four? Motion by Chris, seconded by Kevin, any other questions or comments on that one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve resolution number five of twenty twenty-four? Motion by Kevin?
I'll second.
Seconded by Tina, any questions or comments on that one? All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries. So thank you guys for those. Fingers crossed that we can get those grants in the next year here. So next we have flood wall grant, I will turn this to Ted a little bit, so I'll, I'll do your part, Ted, and then I can fill in the gaps.
Uh, well, for this, for the USDA, trying to cover the remaining cost, is that what you, is that what you're on about? Well, initially, the DEP is gonna cover, what did they say, twenty-five percent of the costs, and so they basically referred it over to the only core and they're coming up with zero, so now it's into the USDA, we're trying to get them to cover the rest of the cost of fixing that flood wall that was damaged.
Yes, and this, they, from my understanding, we have been awarded this seventy-five percent from USDA.
We have, okay.
So we now have a hundred percent funding that we don't have to pay out of pocket to repair that flood wall in Georgetown, so thank you, Ted.
More gold stars!
Another grant with Ted tonight.
All the gold stars!
So thanks to Ted.
You, listen, all you gotta do is get free money to fix it.
So that being said, I do need a motion to authorize Ted and Sharon and/or myself, whatever they require, to sign any necessary grant agreements on behalf of the township.
Motion to sign away.
Motion by Chris, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Tina, any questions or comments on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thanks again, Ted.
It's like Christmas here today, starting out a little rough, but it's turning Christmasy.
Okay, so do we have any other new business? Not move on to reports? We have no zoning report, because we have no zoning officer, so we will revisit that next month, we'll move on to road report whenever you're ready, Ted.
Uh, this is a road report for Tuesday, November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, we completed the second cycle of mowing, uh, the right of ways for the states and the township. Uh, we were asked to help with the water authority with that, uh, major break on Route sixty-six. Uh, we sanded and repainted the fuel oil tanks, uh, for the garage furnaces. Uh, we did try to straighten some road signs, uh, some will need pulled and reset, so if some of them aren't straight, that's, that's why. Um, we cleared leaves in several areas, we, uh, performed tree trimming, uh, I did haul in a load of scrap. I had to go to the courthouse to research some road ri- right of ways, uh, mow grass at the office and garage. We had to do some equipment repair, we did equipment maintenance, building maintenance, uh, we cleared some downed trees and did some administrative work.
Make a motion to accept the road report?
Certainly, motion second, any questions or comments on the road report? All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Excuse me, motion carries. Uh, moving on to our code enforcement report, John, if you'd like to take the floor.
To date, I have twenty properties on the list um, that were received notices for everything from junk vehicles to high grass to stagnant swimming pools. Uh, they're, they're all covered under our nuisance ordinances. Out of those twenty, five have been completed. Uh, there is four that are progressing, they have acknowledged that there is a problem and they're progressing to clean it up. Um, there's eight that ignored the initial letter, so I had to go back and post the properties. So those postings were done and there's three remaining have received recent notices, so they're still within their fifteen day grace period to, uh, make the changes necessary, to meet the ordinance.
Perfect. I recognize some of these properties as regular properties down, especially in the Georgetown area of the township, so it's nice to see that we're taking some action and getting that area cleaned up. Having heard the code enforcement report, do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Chris, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Tina, any questions or comments on his report? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, next we have the police report. Uh, this is something we asked last month, if we can start giving that presentation again, or if we've gone for you here. So for the month of September twenty twenty-four, Southern Armstrong Regional Police Department responded to a total of four hundred eighty-nine calls for service, four vehicle accidents, ten arrests, two hundred and twenty-one staff, traffic stops conducted, forty-nine citations. So that is over their entire coverage area, um, it's not broken down by municipality, we do have a report that has it broken down by call, but that is privileged content, it is specifically, the board can see it and it is confined to this township building, so if anyone wants to see that, Sharon, I believe has it on record, so she's Sharon, you can review that as board members. Can I, do I have a motion to approve this RPD report?
I'd like to mention to approve that as a RPD report.
Second.
Motion by Tina, seconded by Jeremy, any other questions or comments on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we have the minutes here from the authority, I don't know how much we really need to be reviewing those anymore, but we have, if anyone wants them. We do have an assessment notice that the assessment was produced on the property in which we tore down the house in Georgetown. We'll probably get another one of those for the other house that we tore down eventually, do we have any other communications? If not, I'm on to the time for Mr. Coleman, visitors at this time will have three minutes to speak each, I ask that you please raise your hand and ask for acknowledgement if you wish to speak and then state your name and address for the round. Do I have any public comments? Yes.
Josh Wright, some of you know me, some of you don't, I live on Janetta Road. My parents bought the house in the late seventies, I raised a family there after the eighties, nineties, now I'm the reigning steward for the property. During the nineties, the industry boomed, there was coal being mined down along the river. The mills, natural resource companies owned most of the land along the rivers. Families along Janetta Road and Godfrey Road dealt with coal trucks, logging trucks, constant chainsaws, constant excavation. There were instances of bus stops being disrupted, there were instances of kids' play being disrupted, dog walkers being disrupted, working livestock dogs being disrupted. One time, an elderly man was almost hit by a big old coal chunk that came flying out of an over stacked truck, flying down Janetta Road, and it almost took him out of his mailbox. Eventually that all slowed down, but then the township had to figure out what to do about who was gonna fix the road, what we were gonna do about the children. And then Janetta Road got completely repaved, all these watch children signs were put up everywhere. After that, it quieted back down to a nice residential and agricultural road with only really summer campers going up and down, long-term residents who maybe flew a little faster than they should've on the road. Fast forward to nowadays, my girlfriend and I are together, she moved here with me to Gilpin from Lowerborough because it was a quiet road, the nice section zone for agriculture was suited the interest for our family in that land and in this township. Within a year of her being here, she said it's already ba- as bad or worse than Leechburg Road in Lowerborough. She was almost hit walking her service dog by a dump truck moving god knows what in and out of the lower Janetta Road. People were dragging junk boats, junk campers, trailers up the road, they damaged it and were cited by Southwest Regional for Southern Regional for dragging stuff up the road and damaging the road because of neighbor causing. During all this development, it seems an acting supervisor is will, willfully violating township law for his own expansion while targeting other local business owners with the same laws. With the support from a lawless, nose-earning, free-for-all, greed-based community, Si has read the school board stuff, heard the experience that I've had dealing with Jeremy, and now seen the bottom of our road capitalized by low-wage, high-rent minded people, it's enough that Si and I will never. It's enough. It's high, and I will never send kids to Leachburg School while we live in this area. So sure, we can get rid of zoning, we can get rid of laws, we can develop a nice chunk on Janetta Road with a high rise, and I'll apply for immigrants to be sent there. And we'll see how everybody likes when we live in a lawless, no-zoning society. As usual, Charlie, for his age, is the only one I've seen online to give any sort of sensible explanation to the community of zoning and funding the township as a community. We haven't here, but he's not affiliated so much with the pearl collectors anymore. And we've got to agree on what makes this a community and not just what makes it a money pit or a place where property values go up. We need sensible community, sensible zoning. Gilpin and the Village of Forks Church used to have so many more independent and at-home businesses, and now it's a Dollar General and the same.
Josh, I'm gonna stop you here. I have three months on my stop watch, so. Thank you. Okay. Do I have any other public comment? Uh, sorry Anthony, I saw Bob first. Go ahead.
Thanks. Bob George, one twelve, Goodland Lane. Like Boomer, I understand that the park is not gonna get their reallocation next year. And the permanent area budget. So here's just a few figures.
Bob, before you get there, I want to stop you. We did not vote to get rid of that funding. It was talked about, but it has actually not been dropped rid of. It's advertised in the primary budget. But I'm happy to still hear it. It is still in there. I'm happy to hear what you have to say, though, but just so you're aware.
It's in there? For starters, last January first of this year, our be- beginning balance was around ninety-four hundred dollars. Our ending balance right now is fifty-nine hundred dollars. Uh our likely bill for the year was five hundred eighty-two dollars, which we pay half of. The girls softball league pays the other half of that. Our insurance was thirty-seven hundred thirty-nine dollars through Jerry for the year. Our water was a hundred ninety-one dollars. Our money was seventy-three hundred thirty dollars, which was up over two thousand dollars from last year. Garbage is six hundred eighty-two dollars and fifty cents. Our rentals for the year were forty-three seventy-five. So as you can see, we're not self-sufficient by any means. The Boy Scouts give us five hundred dollars to use the park. Uh every Wednesday night during the summer, plus two weeks during the year, they have whatever they have back here. Camping, they have a, they use the local billions. Uh and the school gives us a thousand dollars, and that's basically the upkeep of the softball field for the girls. Three thousand from you guys, three thousand from Leachburg was last year's donation. Mr. Shea, Mr. Commissioner, we didn't get a dime from the county this year, not a dime. It's your park. It's your park, and you can't give us one single penny.
Were they requesting that out?
Yes, it was requested. It's been requested every year. We never get a dime from the county. We take care of them all. Well, what happened to that park?
Bob, could, turn it back to us.
Just give me, give me one second. One second, I'll be done.
Well, I'm, Bob, I'm just gonna ask that any complaints with commissioners you take to the county.
I'm just saying, let's.
I understand, but just turn, turn it back to us if you would, please.
What would happen to that park if Rob, Pastava, myself, Glenda Paul, Greg Paul, Cindy Simpinski, and Hannah Blue would come up here and throw our keys on the table and say, we're done. We're done with the park. Who's gonna take care of it? What's gonna happen to it? You go over that park any day, there's ten to fifteen people walking that park there, walking their dogs. What's gonna happen to it? And this isn't all the expenses. You know, we have our, 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 your normal expenses, upkeep. You know, garbage bags, uh doggy bags, plus who, who's gonna keep the garbage cans? Who's gonna take care of the rentals? Mr. Commissioner, it's on you.
Is there somewhere I can send a hundred dollar donation?
Absolutely. I mean, that's. Thank you for the time. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other Mr. Comment? Anthony, I believe. I saw you.
Three minutes isn't a lot. Uh first of all, I know we met with Mr. Pastava. I will double-check on what was given or not given. We give a lot of donations out, so I honestly don't recall if we did or didn't. Just so y'all know, uh Anthony Shea, I'm actually from Gilpin Township, uh also your county commissioner. We finally got a commissioner down this area of the woods. It's been a long time. Some things we're working on, uh going out and attracting businesses into the community or into the county. Some highlights, uh we actually have a big business called Clarissa coming in over at South Buffalo. They're gonna take over the old B and Y melon spot, and they're actually gonna expand out further. Uh big uh interest for this area since we're so close to Pittsburgh is AI uh in the data center space, so we are working to expand it out. We're also working with a lot of the micro businesses with workforce development. We also have a sixty-unit housing development going in over in South Buffalo and also up in West Hills. As y'all know, the trails are coming in. We're estimating about a million people will pass through the county when those trails are up fully. We're trying to get the little piece left over uh between here and uh Freeport with the Elgany Township area. We uh hired a grant consultant, and we'll help you, Charlie, or anybody's uh folks who have grants have a think, will look at it. You guys have been doing pretty good. Some big things we're working on for the fire departments and police departments is bulk buys of radios, pagers for both uh fire departments and police departments. We're looking for orders of efficiencies, uh either outright paying for it or at least being the prices down. So that's also in the works right now. Let's see, what else did I miss here? You got a little time. Uh broadband is coming. Uh if you haven't got it yet, we're looking to get broadband uh fiber to the household within eighteen to twenty-four months. Uh easier than that. Here's some low clo- I mean, high expensive areas. What's so funny?
Well, we just got rid of it because.
Uh, and you know what? There's new technologies. Uh my background's in telecommunications that are disrupting the, the fiber.
Up our house.
Yeah, they told us they won't come off.
Yes, anyhow, so that's in the works. Uh trails, uh see Clarissa. We're also going after PA sites money. One of the big things that we're having a hard time being competitive is like the Ohio's and West Virginia, where we don't have sites ready for people to come in and build their businesses here. We're getting their butts kicked because it's something more at the Shapiro level, uh state level. Getting the funding so we get the sites ready so people can drop down and give them the financial incentives. So we've been doing a lot of work with the SPC, Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission. So not twenty days off since I've been in this role. In fact, very few days off. We are trying. It's like uh trying to turn a gigantic ship around and get it in a new direction. I'll answer any questions afterwards. That again, three minutes?
You got two, two minutes and forty-four seconds. You came in under time, I don't think. Do I have any other public comment? Yes, name and address for the record, please.
Side, uh two sixty-seven Janetta Road. Um as Josh mentioned, I only recently moved here from Lower Borough. And Janetta Road is already more dangerous for me to walk than Leachburg Road. And Leachburg Road regularly has accidents, like severe ones. And this is due to the irresponsible behavior and actions and Facebook posts of one member of township leadership, Jeremy Smale. Having grown up in a rural area, I expect our leaders to come from good families and prioritize the good of the community over their own interests. The priority is the safety of community members over property value and personal interests. Sadly, this does not seem to be the case right now, and as a Christian, I cannot support greed over the community. End. There's no further comment on that. Now, in the past several months, I have had to dodge speeding dump trucks, watched um municipality vehicles get run off the road by the same dump trucks, dealt with all matters of disturbance, and recently had literal looters careening up and down the road in unsafe vehicles due to a Facebook post by Mr. Smale. A very irresponsible Facebook post that required three Southwest Armstrong EV cruisers and I'm gonna say possibly six officers, two officers per cruiser, to deal with. That is more officers than a lower, anything in Lower Borough other than a parade requires. Lower Borough is substantially bigger. Now, this, it should be alarming to you that it requires this much response due to one person's Facebook post. There's damage to the road and everything. Now Jeremy wants to do away with zoning, dodge certain regulations, build whatever he wants down there on the ruins of old Janetta, and there is no guarantee that this will be done responsibly or safely without oversight. He has already shown to not consider the responsibility of the community or the residents of Janata, Janetta Road. Are we gonna trust him to do this now magically? He hasn't chosen to. Now, we get into this thing about people feeling targeted, Jeremy. I know your launch is very important to you. But there have been numerous things going around about business owners being targeted with regulations when you don't wanna buy regulations. I don't feel safe bringing my family business that has been in existence for forty years to reopen because of your behavior. I do not feel safe babysitting my nephews due to the issues with your construction. I do not feel safe walking my service dog. At the end of the day, we really need to have some oversight down there. We really need to enforce regulation, and we need to make sure that things are built safely and correctly. On a second point, I fully support funding the fire department pool and et cetera.
I'm sorry, I'm happy to stop you here. We're bringing this. Thank you. Can I get your name and address for the record again, please?
Side, Janetta Road, two sixty-seven Janetta Road.
Please fill that.
CY.
Thank you.
Do I have any other public comment? Yes.
Harry Hall, one sixteen Silver Road. I'm back again.
Welcome back.
The one thing I do have a, a huge objection to is, is in the consideration of doing away with any zoning at this point. New zoning ordinance is, is a year old. Okay? It, it, it needs to go through some time before you can say it's good, bad, or indifferent. One year doesn't justify it with the minimal number of permits that are pulled in this township. Okay, and then the zoning that's done in this township is very minimal. Okay, unless, unless, unless not being counted. It, it is counted, and it grows. So I, I would just ask that before anybody make a decision to change any zoning, you, you table this for another year and see what's what. Jeremy, you got a project down there in Janetta that could be great for you, and it could be great for this municipality. It really could. If it's done right. Okay, above board and done right, okay, that could be an asset for everybody.
That's the hoax, Gary.
Okay.
I didn't invest two million dollars in the township just to uh, you know.
Well, and one thing you need to remember, when you invested that two million dollars, this zoning was already in place.
Oh, where?
Okay.
I, I, I'm clear, I, I'm clearly aware of what was there, what is in place, and the only thing to date that I've done is invest my time and resources in cleaning the place up. An absolute pigsty.
I will, I, I'll support you a hundred percent in your development if you're doing, if you're doing it properly. Okay, I'll be the biggest pain in your ass you've ever seen if you don't. I'm back.
Do I have any other public comment? If not, we will move on to calendar reminders additions, and I don't believe we have any special reminders or additions moving forward. Do we have a need for an executive session? If not, I need a motion for adjournment.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Motion by Tina, do you want to adjourn? I'll second that since no one's questioned. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed. Motion carries, being adjourned in twenty-three.
Yes, we have a state, they, they have. Yes.
Good, how are you Ron?
Very good, man. Thanks for all the work you guys do.